Free and heavy gear oil. Stop by to schedule your next service or online at Tilly HD.com. Be road ready with Tilly of Statesville. The following is a paid program and does not necessarily reflect the views of WSIC.
Today's Real Talk, the show focused on all things North Carolina real estate, business and life. I'm your host, Justin Kazepis. You're probably hearing, well, because you may also know I'm the owner of WSIC. You might have been hearing recently that acknowledgement which just started Friday and that's at the beginning of our paid programming hours because of a recent consent order from the FCC, an infringement on our personal property rights. That's what it might as well be.
Your personal property rights.
Personal property. Someone who understands, maybe. I don't know. Brad Howard joining me in studio right now. How are you, sir? Howard for Iredale?
Howard for Iredale. That's right. I have all sorts of paraphernalia here. I guess we're on the radio.
Why are you running for, why would you do that? I just, I'm curious of anybody who you ran once before, we'll talk about that, but, but you are running for political office. Why would you do that given the chaos and ridiculousness of the world right now? Just curious.
I'm running because I care, right? I'm running for my kids and their future kids. I had the opportunity to grow up in Iredale County. My parents grew up in Iredale County, my grandparents. I just want them to have the same opportunity to have, to leave a place better than I found it.
So like how, you say you've been here in Iredale County. Okay, like, give me a reference. Are you talking chickens in the, you have chickens too. We're gonna talk about you, we're gonna talk about your chickens.
We're already going to the chickens.
No, we're not gonna go to the chickens yet. The chickens come later. But like horse and buggy status, is that what we're talking about of Lake Norman? Is that how long your family's been here?
Horse and buggy. Well, a story that my grandmother told. So, you know, if we want to talk about how long we've been here. I remember when Mooresville, I grew up in Mooresville, I remember it had a population of about 8,000. So if you live here today and you weren't here back then, it's been a lot of change.
How many here now, do you know?
In Mooresville, in the greater area, that was 200 in Iredale County, 200,000 in Iredale County and about 100,000 in the greater Mooresville outside of the city limits and along the lake.
You're a numbers guy. You like looking at numbers, analyzing numbers, the management of things.
Yes.
Does management matter in government at all?
It manage, that's what runs government, right, is proper management. Otherwise you end up with a mess.
Biggest issue facing Iredale County right now?
Biggest issue facing Iredale County. There's a few. The one I hear about the most around walking around, talking with people is the taxes. But the biggest capital improvement issue that needs to be dealt with is the Weathers Creek High School.
How much you think it's gonna cost to build a high school? Or what's the budget or whatever? What are you gonna be, if you get elected, right, what's the numbers you gotta work with to build this school?
Oh, well, right now with the current commissioners or the people have approved, as they approved the $80 million that was in the general obligation bond. And then the counties currently through the commissioners and the manager are doing an additional 40 million in limited obligation debt, which is 120 million.
To build a school, one school?
To build a high school.
Why does it cost so much money to build a school? How could this, how could it cost that much to build one school?
Inflation. And, and you know, if we would have built it when, you know, we should have, it would have been a lot less. You know, and the caveat to that too is not only is the, the capital cost almost doubled, but the, the interest rate has doubled as well.
And some of this, I, you know, I go down a dark, deep rabbit hole of, of issue and webs and all that kind of stuff. But, but, but Iredale County, what's relevant as a commissioner for Iredale County day to day?
What do the, what do the commissioners do on a day to day basis?
Yeah, and besides work another job, because I know that this is not, you know, a luxury, luxurious job in any sort or fashion. But, but the concept of the role, what would be on a job description for a, a job posting for county commissioner?
County commissioner sets the budget or sets the tax rate, approves the budget, sets the tax rate. They hire and find the manager and they deal with zoning issues and administrative issues per the state.
Is that, is any of that even relevant to our local community right now? Is any of that, like are people talking about?
Everything's hyper local. The thing I hear the most is the tax issue. Besides the tax issue, I get the school issue.
Those are the two big things you're hearing.
Yes.
Property taxes are real. Lake Norman's changed a little bit. Genie's out of the bottle.
Property tax is real for a lot of people. I mean, they, you know, it's been doubted that they've lowered the property tax rate, you know, from 53 and three quarters down to 50 cents. But most people, you know, the budget went up 26%. So when they didn't go revenue neutral, it was a 26% increase in the budget. So, you know, most people did not get a 26% increase. They got a 50, 80 or 100% increase. So that's real money.
For residential property?
Residential, commercial, everything.
How important do, are small businesses even relevant anymore to the community at all?
Absolutely. They're the backbone of the community. Without small business, you know, I mean, that's what, that's what makes Iredale thrive.
Y'all, y'all got a cool downtown, a few downtowns. So I did a rating on Good Morning LKN of the top downtowns around Lake Norman.
Okay.
I gave Mooresville number one and I gave Statesville number two.
And why did you do that?
Mooresville, y'all got a few things going on there. You got some nightlife. We were there for the Mooresville Children's Theater, saw Little Women. I'd never heard of that story before in my life before going to see this play.
Okay.
Spoiler, somebody dies in it, by the way. Don't, I don't, I don't know if anybody you know knows that or not. And then Statesville has quite a few businesses, but just isn't there yet demographically on the nightlife scene, right? So I do like the development aspect there. Real estate pricing. I told you I was gonna search out live on, because look, WSIC has a firm license. You are a licensed broker as well.
Yes, I am.
WSIC has a firm license and is a member of Canopy Realtor Association and Canopy MLS.
Okay.
Because I believe in local data, because I believe in the power of the local community.
Hyper local.
Hyper local community. And so last week I did a search for Mecklenburg County, under $500,000, active and coming soon.
Okay.
Mecklenburg County is 1.1 million people.
Okay.
913 listings last week when I did that on the show.
913.
And a 1.1 million population county. So let's do Iredale.
So in the entire county?
Yeah, in the entire county.
Okay.
So what price point, I'll do 500,000 or less as well in Iredale. Cause I'm thinking, okay, if you say $130,000 a year a household makes, let's just throw out the number, which is a generous number, by the way. That's not a big, that's not a little number by any stretch of the imagination. That's in my opinion, kind of like if you have good credit, you're everything set, 500,000 would have cost you as a family, right, to be able to buy, you know, a decent sized house. Let's see what it gets you. 423 matches in the MLS right now. Do we have a supply issue by chance in the housing market? Or what, what is your take on the current housing market?
I mean, there is a supply issue. And one part is people aren't willing to sell because if they sell, where are they gonna go? Because the prices have inflated so much. You know, the interest rates are double what they were probably when they locked into their mortgage.
And it's because people don't want to leave here. So how dare you create this place that is so great that nobody wants to leave anymore? Cause your family's been here a while.
They have, they have. So like I said, we've seen the changes. You know, my parents, there was a time before there was a Lake Norman. There was a time there was before an I-77. And I think we talked earlier, told you the story about my grandma tipping over the wagon.
The horse and buggy. There she goes, grand grandma.
Yeah. And we're not talking like far, far history ago. That was three generations.
Wow. Brad Howard, Howard for Iredale, joining me in the studio today. Brave soul. I welcome everyone running, but very few people want to talk to me. So it's, this is, this is a rare treat today. It's a rare treat. So I, and look, I, as much as, you know, anybody would think, I'm not gonna, I never shy away from the conversations. And you haven't either. You haven't shied away from conversations.
I don't. I'll be right here.
Okay. Brad Howard, we're sticking around. Today's Real Talk coming back, fam.
More of today's Real Talk with Justin Kazepis coming up on 1059 100.7 WSIC. Local starts here.
Well, after a chilly weekend, we're gonna start to warm things back up as we head through the work week and staying dry for a while too. Sunshine today for our Monday as high temperatures climb back into the mid and upper 50s. Dip down into the low to mid 30s overnight and 60s on the way as we go into the middle of the week. Our next rain chance, not creeping back in until we get later in the work week Thursday night and into Friday. We'll be warm too by then. That's your forecast from the WSIC Weather Center. I'm meteorologist Chase Myers.
Here is your WSIC community calendar. Merle Fest is back. April 25th through the 28th at Wilkes Community College. Featuring nearly 100 performers, including Old Crow Medicine Show, Turnpike Troubadours, The Teske Brothers, Nickel Creek and more. Tickets and information at merlefest.org. Listen each morning to Good Morning LKN for your chance to win tickets. Downtown Mooresville's Sham Rocks and Shenanigans is on its way. St. Patty's Day is right around the corner. The festival is happening in downtown Mooresville. Attendance is free, but there are ticket packages available for purchase. Irish dancers, pipe bands, food and drinks. March 16th, downtown Mooresville. Sham Rocks and Shenanigans is on its way. For more info, visit downtownmooresville.com. Want to attend the Charlotte Home and Remodeling Show? Throughout the day, you have your chance to win tickets. Listen to Good Morning LKN, the home ad show, the news drive at five and the scoreboard. Each gives you your chance to win. The Charlotte Home and Remodeling Show, February 23rd through the 25th. Wanna see a Tyrannosaurus Rex? How about a Triceratops? Dinosaur World Live is coming to CAIN Center for the Arts, Friday, March 29th. That's not the only fun family adventure coming to CAIN Center for the Arts. Dinosaur World Live, Friday, March 29th. For tickets and to see the entire spring lineup, visit cainarts.org. That's C-A-I-N arts.org. Have an event you would like to tell people about? Yard sales, estate sales and everything in between? Visit wsicnews.com and click on events to submit your event today.
Call now to speak with Justin at 844-Studio 4. It's today's Real Talk on 1059 100.7 WSIC.
Today's Real Talk, the show focused on all things North Carolina, real estate, business and life. Keith called in. Keith, Keith trying to, Keith asking the question, everybody's been asking, I've, I've read the articles, Keith. I've seen him. Everybody's talking about the tax rate hike. That's what everybody's talking about right now. Lot of people talking about it. I'm not here to get into who voted for what. That's not what this is. Is there any representation currently on the Iredale County Commissioners of someone who lives in the southern part of Iredale County?
Currently?
Currently.
No.
I find that interesting because representation is talked about a lot. It's talked about a lot. And how do you feel about the role of the county commissioner and your personal passion for community? Connect for me the, your why you're wanting to run again.
Besides the fact that I care, I mean, my kids, I'm running because, you know, in, I mean, back on your question there. I mean, the county commissioner should be one who supports all of Iredale County and understands all of the issues. But, I mean, I think that, I mean, I'm building on your quest, your response there is sincere ties. I don't believe, except for a brief period that anyone's been from the southern, south of 150, I know, in 15 years.
Why don't more people come out to vote everywhere, whole county? Why doesn't, I wish every single person in the entire county came out and voted.
I wish everyone would come out and vote.
Like you should be able to just do it like securely if we could. I don't know what kind of way this, whatever, like pumping gas. Like, hey, let me be able to, as long as it was secure and we could get every single person's vote.
Yeah, federal holiday to vote. I love it.
Oh, federal holiday to vote. Okay. All right. So that's what you want to talk about. You want to talk about the relationship now. Okay. So let's talk about federal North Carolina local.
Okay.
Is that, is that concept, is that, is it important to know that at all at the county level and how that whole process and where dollars come from and everything, programs? How does it all come together as a county commissioner?
As a county commissioner, I mean, it's very important to have a great, have great working relationships with your, your local legislators. You know, everybody at the state level, at the federal level, just to, when issues come up, just so you're able to, you know, go figure out how to navigate the problem and solve it.
You just make it seem like it's easy. Like I'm over here struggling even to come up with like the concept here and you're just making it seem like it should just be done. Do, what kind of management experience do you have that makes you prepared and make this so easy?
What I've done.
Cause you're talking nonchalantly to me right now, like it's no big deal. He's getting aggressive in here, people. He's getting aggressive.
No, it's not a big, I mean, I mean, in, in theory, it's not a big deal. I mean, it's just a business. I mean, Iredale County is basically a $323 million business.
That your family has to live in though, that the community has to be a part of. What you, you really are gonna give up just, what, like, like you're gonna, you're gonna stop? You can do so much in, in the, in the sense of, of private as you've done, right? People know you in the community. I'm not, like, that's the thing is you're known. You're a quiet guy behind the scenes, but I'm telling you, you're, you're, you're a nice guy in the sense of wanting to make sure that the community is cared for. Your kids matter to you, your family matters to you.
They do more than anything.
So talk about your chickens then. Talk about your chickens. Cause now that's what I was trying to get back to was the chickens. That's what I've been trying to connect with this whole time.
Oh gosh. Are you serious?
Yeah.
Okay. So no, I, I really do have chickens. The more my kids enjoy the chickens as well. But we have 18 chickens right now on top of four dogs and a cat and three kids and everything else.
So you got like a Dr. Dolittle House kind of thing going on over here with all this?
At times it feels that way.
So, okay. So then connect with me the relevance of farms in Iredale County. How are farms relevant in Iredale County?
Well, most people, especially in the south, don't realize this, but I mean, once you go north of Statesville, there's another half of the county up there and, you know, you're number, you know, Iredale County is number one in production of dairy in the state.
Dairy is a big deal.
Yes. And it's right here in Iredale County. Iredale County is an economic employment center, both for agriculture, agribusiness and for industrial and small business and
There you go using that word, small business again. Are small business really relevant these days?
Small business is more relevant than anyone can imagine and keeping the local economy afloat.
Okay. And what about jobs? You brought up, you said the word jobs. Well, how does a county commissioner gonna affect jobs? I mean, be honest.
By creating a place that people want to come live and move their employment to move their centers. I mean, EDC just announced Den, a new company here in Mooresville, almost 200 jobs. And then before that quarter just announced another, I don't have the stat in front of me. I think it was about 56, 60 new jobs. All very, very good paying jobs.
Do you think, do you think your people are gonna be upset that I've derailed off the questions that I gave you prior to and have just taken you down this rabbit hole at this point, do you think?
Since we've started this, I haven't even looked at the questions. So you have taken me all over the world.
It's because I, I love when I get the opportunity to sit down with somebody who has been in the area for a long time because Lake Norman is so unique. It's so unique. Watershed. We were talking about watershed again, just even before we, we came on air. Watershed's relevant, right, for county?
It is, it is. I think even the school system's had some issues with some watershed on expansion.
And the schools, the schools conundrum now, whether you're for choice or not for choice is, how, does a county commissioner decide or make a relevant decision based on that currently in the equation? Or is that purely a state level?
Yeah, the school choice is at the state level.
And so the county is focused on spending the dollars, managing the project, getting it up. What about after it's done? Do you have to do stuff after it's done with the school? Like managing it or who?
That's the school board.
The school board then. And then, so there's a relationship there, I'd imagine.
There is, there is.
You know, I'm from North Mac. So this is the crazy thing for me. I'm not voting in Iredale County. So for me, it's, it's not like, I just get to have an honest conversation with somebody about it. And it, it's, it seems like, I've seen articles in the paper about the school board, right? All that kind of stuff, right? That, that's all been out there. But how do we move forward? How do we come together as a community and move forward for the good of our kids, of our family, of our people around us? How do we come together and, and move the ship forward from what was?
That's a good question. I mean, the first thing is that we all start, we sit around the table and we all get along and we talk and we, we have to stop this argument, this argumentative infighting is the first place it has to start. The second place it needs to start is just open, honest dialogue with each other and communication. I mean, I know you and I are on several business, not business, but boards.
Yeah.
Together.
We have groups that intermingle based on, on our professional relationships that we have. That's, yeah. For sure. I'm an attorney by trade, you're a broker.
Right.
I mean, I, you want me to pull up your broker license right now? We'll do that with the real time data too. That's fine with me.
No, no, no. But no, we're, collaboration and communication are key. And then if you have collaboration and communication and you have transparent governance, everything else can work itself out. But if you're not willing to sit down and talk through it, then that's where the, it starts to break down.
Should people be like, like, is it just texting and emails? Is that all the board does? Like what's your, what, like how many meetings a month do you have to attend as a county commissioner? Like two, three? Or is it more than that?
Oh, it's a lot more than that. It's probably a 30, 40 hour a week commitment.
Dang, for that little of pay?
I know. You work for quarters.
Dang. That's out here. Relationship then I would imagine with superintendent, right? So that probably becomes relevant as well as part of that school board equation and everything like that?
It does. Schools, law enforcement, yeah.
So that would be as of right now, Dr. James, that would also be Sheriff Campbell. You have relationships with them at all and any?
I've known both of them for, for quite a while. And, you know, it's every other government service and agency inside the departments. Just having the, the knowledge and working relationships are, I think are key.
People always ask about the mandate stuff. Like that's what everyone asks me about, like from the state level, right? Like if something crazy at COVID goes down again, talking about mandates locally. Is it really fair to say that like one size should fit all? Like, don't you have to be able to analyze? And maybe it's me being unreasonable. Should you be able to analyze multiple scenarios, different ways, rather than just go, you know, one answer only based on because this is what we said? Isn't that, isn't that part of the process?
Yeah. I mean, mandates coming down are never the answer. I mean, every community is unique. Every situation is unique. And on that topic, I mean, you went down there, I mean, you had one mandate for one thing. What if the bubonic plague came back and that mandate wouldn't work and?
Bubonic plague? That sounds scary. Even when you say that, it makes me quiver a little. I'm like, no way. Bubonic plague? I don't want that.
No. So, yeah. So every situation is different, but no, I'm, I'm very pro freedom and, you know, I'm, and
You got chickens. You got, I don't even, I'm not allowed to have chickens. You live in a spot where you're allowed to have chickens. Again, I'm from North Mac though. So I haven't even said the word Charlotte yet. I haven't even, I haven't even said it yet. See, we haven't even gotten into the meat of the conversation.
What country is that?
I do believe that, and you know this, cause we've had these conversations that Lake Norman, we, even though we have to find that way to keep our individual great things about our community, but, but there are times where the relationship and increasingly more and more, and maybe that's my wrong perception, is gonna become very, very important as these days go on.
Oh, it is. And, and I think if you look at every town, every town, you know, and, and you're saying you're, I mean, you being from North Mac, we're talking North Mac and Iredale. But every, every of the municipality in North Mac is uniquely different. And that's what makes them so great. Every town and city in Iredale County is uniquely, is unique. And that's what makes it different and wonderful place to be. If everything was the same, it would be a boring place to live. I mean.
All right. So we both agree on two things. We both agree that genie's out of the bottle. Senator Tillis announces billions of dollars for a light rail from Richmond to Raleigh. Well, the perception and that everything's gonna happen and what that's gonna do around the world, people searching for best places to live and Lake Norman comes up on a list on Google, right? The genie's out of the bottle. The, the second piece of that is that we have these ties together because of this common thing that's called Lake Norman. Have you heard of Lake Norman before, by the way? I don't know. I haven't even talked about Lake Norman.
Where, where's Lake Norman?
I didn't say Charlotte and I didn't say Lake Norman yet. It's, it's quite a unifier, it seems like. Like we're in this, whether we like it or not, more like siblings? Is that a better way to think of this?
Yeah. There you go. You've got Lincoln County, Catawba County, Iredale and Mecklenburg.
That's a pretty robust group right there.
But, but the majority of the shoreline is in Iredale County.
Ooh. So, so that's, the teams are forming now. That's what we're talking about. Okay. No, I get it. I understand how this works. All right. Sitting down with Brad Howard, Howard for Iredale. I, I would say if you have a question, but Bill, Bill's been handling the questions right now these days in here. Don't worry. Yeah, it's okay. We can get a little bit more into the perspective of Iredale versus North Carolina versus US of A. Are you okay with talking about that? Is that relevant as a county commissioner at all? Or no, does that not affect anything at all?
Whatever you want to talk about.
I think the people just want to just talk to leaders. You know what I mean? That's, maybe I'm crazy. Maybe, maybe we give up on leadership. What do you think?
We don't give up on leadership. We just put the right leaders in place.
Keep it right here. Today's Real Talk with Justin Kazepis will return after this short break on 1059 100.7 WSIC.
Well, after a chilly weekend, we're gonna start to warm things back up as we head through the work week and staying dry for a while too. Sunshine today for our Monday as high temperatures climb back into the mid and upper 50s. Dip down into the low to mid 30s overnight and 60s on the way as we go into the middle of the week. Our next rain chance, not creeping back in until we get later in the work week Thursday night and into Friday. We'll be warm too by then. That's your forecast from the WSIC Weather Center. I'm meteorologist Chase Myers.
I'm getting vaccinated with Prevnar 20, a Pfizer vaccine.
So am I, because I'm at risk for pneumococcal pneumonia.
If you're 19 or older with chronic conditions like asthma, diabetes, COPD or heart disease, or are 65 or older, you are at increased risk for pneumococcal pneumonia. Ask your doctor or pharmacist about Prevnar 20, pneumococcal 20-valent conjugate vaccine. It can help protect you against pneumococcal pneumonia in just one dose. Even if you've already been vaccinated with other pneumonia vaccines, Prevnar 20 may help provide added protection. Prevnar 20 is approved for adults to help prevent infections from 20 strains of the bacteria that cause pneumococcal pneumonia. Continued approval may depend on a supportive study. Don't get Prevnar 20 if you've had a severe allergic reaction to the vaccine or its ingredients. Adults with weakened immune systems may have a lower response to the vaccine. Side effects include pain and swelling at the injection site, fatigue, headache, muscle and joint pain. For full prescribing information, please call 1-855-213-2138 or visit prevnar20.com.
The Ugly Antenna has now become a household name in this area. The Ugly Antenna allows those without a streaming provider to receive up to 50 channels absolutely free of charge, including Fox 461. The Ugly Antenna is small and connects directly to your TV. Get the Ugly Antenna for just $40. Call 704-682-1755. That's 704-682-1755 for the Ugly Antenna.
Conversations that matter.
I gotta tell you, I'm afraid to even think about the next presidential election.
Led by you.
It's a mockery of American politics.
This is WSIC News Talk Now.
Prioritizing your health is one of the best ways to take care of yourself. From routine visits to the joys of pregnancy, to the illnesses that stop you in your tracks. Iredale Health System will be by your side. Learn more at IredaleHealth.org.
Lowry Drug is a source for excellent pharmacy services. We have served the Statesville community since 1959. We have attentive customer service, a state of the art compounding laboratory and the Disfil medication packaging system that takes the work out of medication management for those using medication planners. We do it for you. Come see us at Lowry Drug in Statesville. Call 704-873-2247. Come see us.
This is a Bloomberg Money Minute. Consumer sentiment rose this month for a third month in a row, even though a new read on inflation at the wholesale level was hotter than forecast in January. Prices paid to producers at the core level rose more than expected last month, up one half of 1% month over month and nearly 1% year over year. Core prices strip out food and energy, the Fed's preferred method of looking at numbers. Meanwhile, a separate report shows groundbreakings of new homes plummeted last month with housing starts falling nearly 15%. Economists were expecting no change. Meanwhile, building permits, a sign of future activity slipped a bit when a slight increase was expected. Nike says it's cutting its global workforce by 2%. That could translate to around 1,600 jobs. The sports wear companies been pushing to reduce costs to counter a weaker sales outlook and more competition. A memo said the cuts will happen in two phases. Stocks finished the week lower on Wall Street. The Dow fell 145 points. The Nasdaq lost 131. The S and P lost 24. Erica Hurskowitz, Bloomberg Radio.
It's today's Real Talk with Justin Kazepis on 1059 100.7 WSIC. Local starts here.
Today's Real Talk, the show focused on all things North Carolina, real estate, business and life. Brad Howard, Howard for Iredale, joining me in studio today. Anything like you expected it to be before coming in here, be honest.
Not at all.
All right. I'm gonna keep going then.
Okay, good, good, good.
Josh's Farmers Market, you familiar with the situation in general, the history?
Yeah, the general.
Yeah. How important is the concept of, let's say blending or not blending, living together as farm and non-farm retail density, this equation of land use basically? How could, how, how can your brain, where does your brain start with Iredale County, given how unique the structure is in that kind of equation? Cause real estate, if I remember correctly, is very relevant to being a county commissioner.
It is, it is. I'm, I'm trying to figure out where you're going with the question.
I want you to help me understand, how can you put Iredale County together, right? Because that's really what it's about, isn't it? I mean, as part of land use plans and all that thinking, how, how do you know what, what's right for the community?
I mean, what's right for each community is, depends on each local individual community. I mean, what's right for Mooresvilles may not be right for Troutman. What's right for Troutman may not be right for Statesville. Same goes for Harmony and Love Valley and the rest of the county in general.
That's a lot of listening. Can you handle that much listening? Are you good at that? Is that, is that your thing?
I'm a good listener. God gave me one mouth and two ears for a reason.
You're, you're doing great right now because you're taking, you're handling me. And this is, I'm trying to hit you with everything I got right now. Look, I'm, look, and this isn't for you, Brad. This is for, this is for everybody else. This is because you're running for a public office.
I am.
There's a lot of drama right now in the public office world. Have you heard of President Trump? Do you know who he is? Or am I dating myself? Do you know who he is just in general?
I think I have an idea.
Do you, how relevant is the federal government to the local community?
I mean, I think, and, and, and your, all of your shows and your radio station, your concept in general is, is all about being hyper local. And that's where I think a lot of people miss the boat is everybody shows up to vote for president. Everybody shows up to vote for governor. But they don't get involved in all the other council of state races. They don't get involved in the local commissioner races and the local, city races. And, you know, that, that's what impacts their lives more than a federal race. I mean, your day-to-day life is impacted hyper locally.
Does local matter?
It matters more than anything.
It better because that's my whole business model here at the radio station.
I know you're in trouble.
It's all local. That's my whole mantra. That's what our slogan is. Local starts here. My gosh. All right. So it seems like we're going to have to work together. Like, like, like if you do get elected, I'm in North Meck, you're in, you're in Iredell, we have to get along.
Do we have to?
Well, I guess, we don't have to agree.
Something back at you.
Yeah. We don't, we don't have to agree because I also, you know, down here in North Meck, if I'm kind of just naming them like family members at the Thanksgiving table, you know, we got to deal with Cabarrus as well over here. I got it. You, again, Charlotte's part of our family is Mecklenburg County. So this seems, you know.
They recognize that North Meck exists?
Uh, well, that's a different, I mean, we tried to, there's certain, we're, we're growing the relationship, right? We're trying to be part of a conversation. Uh, transportation's relevant for the county, is it not?
It is. Uh, which part in particular?
Which part you want to talk about of transportation? What's your thought? Transportation thoughts?
My thoughts on transportation is all the municipalities need to get together, which are doing, and have conversations about, you know, what, what Troutman does impacts Statesville and it impacts Mooresville. What Cheryl's Ford does, which is not even in Iredell County and Catawba, and Lincoln directly impacts Iredell County. People don't think about that, but you have 18,000 cars a day as the last traffic count that come across, the bridge, 150 bridge, onto 150 and clog 150 and then go back to Cheryl's Ford. And we have no say in Iredell County as what they do in Catawba County. But I think in having open dialogue and good, honest communication, you know, we can help, we can work together and try to, uh, solve that problem.
And this is where Cousin Janice at the Thanksgiving table says, yeah, and 73 matters too. Highway 73 matters too.
That one's not in Iredell.
All that Iredell pushing down to Mecklenburg County. That's, that's what happens next. See, that's how the, the question progresses. Yeah. Uh, sorry, spoiler for our east side family, or excuse me, west side family of the lake, because we do cover the west side of the lake as well. And, uh, the growth is coming. I mean, and they know it. I think they know it too, over there on that side of the lake. They planned highway infrastructure money, right? Look at Highway 16. I like Highway 16 right now. What do you think of that on the west side of the lake?
Highway 16?
Yeah.
There's no traffic.
There's no traffic, but at least it's like six lanes, you know, like at least it's like, why?
To have that first.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah. Like, so that, at least they, it seems like things were thought about. And so the relationship then from, I would imagine, local and state, is that the biggest driver of transportation? Or does federal actually play a bigger role for us long-term in transportation?
I mean, the, the roads are all state roads funded by N C D O T or the state legislature and D O T.
So there's definitely a relationship then?
There's definitely a relationship. Yeah. It's just keeping the, the dialogue with, with everyone that's involved to, to make sure that, uh, those projects don't get dropped and left behind, just to keep, you know, just be that squeaky wheel that stays in their ears to, uh, what the priorities are.
Is it okay to disagree?
Absolutely. If we all said the same thing, this would be a communist country and I don't think that's what anybody wants.
Some people are trying it right now, though. Do, are you scared for the next generation? Or do you have hope? You've got kids. Are you scared for the next generation? Or how do you feel about it? Next generation, just of the family?
Um, I'm fearful, but, um, but I'm hopeful as well. I think if the right leadership is there and the right leader, and the, and the right groups of people are in place, that, uh, we will have a brighter future. But I think it could go the other way if you don't have the right leadership in place.
Leadership's okay. Management's pretty cool, though. What do you think about that? What's the, what was like your first job?
My first job was, uh, out of high school in, um, I mean, the first real job or first like pumping gas for, you know, high school?
You tell me.
Okay. First real job was, um, or first, uh, job was out of, uh, college or in college. I worked manufacturing. Uh, we had, uh, you know, a plant here in Mooresville and, uh, went to night school at UNC Charlotte. Took me a few extra years to graduate.
He just said Charlotte. Everyone track him. He just said Charlotte.
I went to UNC Charlotte. I graduated from UNC Charlotte, built school business. But no, I, I worked manufacturing the day, did that at night and, um, you know, graduated 2001. Right after I graduated, married my wife. Then we went, uh, trying to think of business. Then we did, uh, because manufacturing at that time, you know, NAFTA was a big issue. So we were losing jobs down to Mexico. And then, you know, we were starting to see the, uh, the push over to China and Asia, um, with the jobs. So I went into hospitality restaurants. Um, that's when we got into real estate and, uh, then later got into health and wellness.
So you're really an entrepreneur?
Yes. I like to solve problems, like to create jobs, like new challenges, uh, and, and enjoy just helping make the community a better place through opportunity.
Do you think that we can handle more jobs locally? Like, is there a point we reach where there's, there's too many jobs?
There can never be too many jobs, uh, because if you, if you're not growing, you're, you're dying. So.
Are there good food spots to eat? What's your favorite spot to eat for food? What do you like to eat?
Oh, I like everything.
Aw, come on. I'm, okay. You don't, you don't have to name a spot. What type of food do you like a lot? Like, do you?
Sushi.
Oh, sushi. Big sushi fan. Okay.
Yeah.
Sushi's pretty good. Do you do the shrimp sauce and that kind of stuff? Because you said, you mentioned health and wellness. So now, you know, and I talk about food 96% of the day. So.
Yeah, no, not typically. Just the soy sauce.
The soy sauce kind of guy. Okay. All right. I never got into soy sauce. A little too tangy for me sometimes.
I have all my food groups covered.
That's good.
Sushi, like, uh, Indian food.
Could we bring a sushi place to Iredell County for jobs? Do you think that would be, would, would that be a good thing? Or what do you think about that?
There's a lot of good ones in Iredell County.
Would you say that there's a good, like, actual diverse group of, you know, sectors and businesses throughout the area? How do you feel about that of the diversity of the business sectors?
Oh, and that's what makes Iredell County so strong is its economic diversity. Like I said before, you have agribusiness in the north. You have, you know, we have a good industrial base. We have a good corporate base. We have a great small business base. Um, and, and all the industries, we're not, we're not, uh, shoe, you know, we're not, um, just in one specific industry, like a lot of communities. I mean, we have, we have, you know, Department of Defense contractors, we have retailers. We have, we have a huge diversity of, uh, employment so that when there's different cycles in the market, it helps us, uh, stay float when the rest of the country may take a big dip.
Should people come out and vote, like at all, ever again? Or should we just give up?
No, everyone should come out and vote and you should vote. It's early voting's already started. So I'm hoping that, uh, if you aren't able to vote on March the 5th, that you'll at least make your time out to go vote early. Uh, there's five early voting locations around the county and I, I don't know. Do you have a link to it on your website?
We can add that. Sure. I'm radio. I just talk on the microphone. They, they don't let me do, they don't let me do anything else. This is like the box I live in most days right here. This is my little jungle gym. So.
They don't let you out of here.
No, they don't. This is.
They don't even give you a window.
No, I have no windows.
Actually, I think you probably had a window, but this one.
Don't be dissecting my walls like in a contractor-like fashion. Don't be doing that. Today's Real Talk, the show focused on North Carolina real estate, business, and life. Been sitting down with Brad Howard. Only one segment left.
One segment.
That's it. And so now's the time. If, if you're, if you want people to vote for you, you're going to have to tell them why. You're going to have to tell them why it even matters. Cause I think we just got to first start with getting people out to vote. How about that? Should we start with that?
We start with that.
I think that's a pretty good place to start. We'll, we'll work on that when we come back. We're going to come up with some ideas. Going to come up with some eyes, uh, ideas of how to get you out to vote.
All right.
We'll be back with more of today's Real Talk, hosted by real estate attorney Justin Kazepas in just a moment on 1059, 100.7 WSIC.
Well, after a chilly weekend, we're going to start to warm things back up as we head through the work week and staying dry for a while, too. Sunshine today for our Monday as high temperatures climb back into the mid and upper 50s. Dip down into the low to mid 30s overnight and 60s on the way as we go into the middle of the week. Our next rain chance, not creeping back in until we get later in the work week Thursday night and into Friday. We'll be warm too by then. That's your forecast from the WSIC Weather Center. I'm meteorologist Chase Myers.
Here is your WSIC community calendar. Merle Fest is back. April 25th through the 28th at Wilkes Community College, featuring nearly 100 performers, including Old Crow Medicine Show, Turnpike Troubadours, The Teske Brothers, Nickel Creek, and more. Tickets and information at merlefest.org. Listen each morning to Good Morning L K N for your chance to win tickets. Downtown Mooresville's Sham Rocks and Shenanigans is on its way. St. Patty's Day is right around the corner. The festival is happening in downtown Mooresville. Attendance is free, but there are ticket packages available for purchase. Irish dancers, pipe bands, food and drinks. March 16th, downtown Mooresville. Sham Rocks and Shenanigans is on its way. For more info, visit downtownmooresville.com. Want to attend the Charlotte Home and Remodeling Show? Throughout the day, you have your chance to win tickets. Listen to Good Morning L K N, the home ad show, the news drive at five, and the scoreboard. Each gives you your chance to win. The Charlotte Home and Remodeling Show, February 23rd through the 25th. Want to see a Tyrannosaurus Rex? How about a Triceratops? Dinosaur World Live is coming to CAIN Center for the Arts, Friday, March 29th. That's not the only fun family adventure coming to CAIN Center for the Arts. Dinosaur World Live, Friday, March 29th. For tickets and to see the entire spring lineup, visit caarts.org. That's C-A-I-N arts.org. Have an event you would like to tell people about? Yard sales, estate sales, and everything in between? Visit wsicnews.com and click on events to submit your event today.
Today's Real Talk continues now. Here's your host, licensed real estate attorney, Justin Kazepas on 1059, 100.7 WSIC.
Today's Real Talk, the show focused on all things North Carolina real estate, business, and life. Does the county commissioners have any effect on like grocery store prices? Is that anything related to, to what you do, would do as a county commissioner?
No.
Brad Howard says no.
No, I say no. I mean, only setting the, uh, only sales tax, the county portion of sales.
Sales tax. Sales tax seems relevant, too. We only talk about property tax most of the time. How, how relevant is sales tax to the local economy?
It depends. I mean, do you shop at Costco or Grocery Bill or Walmart, Target?
Grocery Bill for sure. Every week. It's crazy, isn't it?
Yep. It is.
How are businesses surviving right now in the climate that's been created in general? Like, like you're a numbers guy, you're a business guy. How are some of these small businesses surviving?
Some I understand and some I, I don't. Uh, I know it's hard for them. And, you know, and that's why, you know, with tax increases like this, and then, you know, things the county commission can't control, like the insurance, uh, increases and, um, and just other increases in general. I, I don't know how there are a lot of people, folks are surviving.
Is that relevant for the future?
It is because, I mean, we have to look at everything and plan 10, 20, 30 years down the future. And I, and I think, you know, one, one of the things that I bring that's a different perspective is that's how we will look at things, uh, as opposed to the 1-3-5 approach.
How far is reasonable to look? Like 100 years? Should I be thinking 100 years ahead? What do you think? Do you think you got flying cars in 100 years?
I have no idea.
Is everybody driving electric at least in 100 years? Do you want to go there? You don't want to go there? Yeah. Probably not driving electric.
I don't think the grid will handle it.
Well, where are you going to put all the batteries?
And, yeah, what are you going to do with the batteries after 10 years?
What are you going to do with all that? That's a lot of parts and stuff. But we do have a lot of manufacturing locally.
We do.
So don't we, we, we have a, I would say as a whole region, again, and you guys as Iredell County, having even deeper of a reason to care very much what happens in that sector of the world, I would imagine, right?
Absolutely. I mean, um, I mean, one of the businesses I toured, I've been touring a lot of the companies out there, the larger employers. They're the largest, or they make 50, almost 50% of the catalytic converters, uh, that are sold in the U S are made right here in Iredell County.
Giggity. That's what I say, like racing, you know what I mean? There's a racing history here locally. There's a manufacturer, automotive. But now it has moved. So these racing teams, like when we talk to them, where we talk to the people involved in the industrial that used to be in racing, defense contract stuff, like there's a lot of adapting taking place.
I mean, the same skill sets that go into, you know, hand crafting, you know, a race car could go into, you know, making an artificial joint or to, you know, in any type of industry that uses the CNC machines or uses any of that. And with this, I mean, if we're, we're talking about Iredell County, have to give a plug to Iredell Ready, the, the E D C, the community colleges, the schools, the county, the cities, everybody that's worked together for that because that is a phenomenal program to pair, you know, potential workforce with, uh, employers in the, in the trade sector.
Trade's relevant.
It is very relevant.
Do you think that there should be even more discussion of trades in schools?
Absolutely. Every, every student is different. Every, um, everybody's needs are different. And, uh, you know, college isn't for everyone. And you can go in, have a trade, you know, get a trade school, get a specific job or degree or certification. And you can leave at a fraction of the cost and have a job with no student debt.
Do community colleges affect the county at all?
The county funds the infrastructure, yes.
So kind of like an important interest in making sure that it succeeds?
Absolutely. And then, yeah, Mitchell does a phenomenal job. So Dr. Brewer does a great job there.
Do you think that, do you find that more people, because they're saying that there's stats out there, you know, you Google on the internet, anything's true. That's what I say all the time. Well, no matter what you read on the internet, it's true.
That's right. You can find anything you want.
There's more people moving here and that are no longer like born and raised here that are living here now percentage-wise. Like we've crossed over the threshold of like 50%. Do you believe that to be true? Or what's your thoughts on that?
I absolutely believe it to be true. I mean, like I said, when I grew up, Mooresville had 8,000 people. I mean, now the greater area out to the lake and, uh, you know, it's closer to 100,000. So it's, uh, a lot different, a lot more people. And, uh, you know, I, I think on the road that I live on, there, there, there's no, I mean, there's one, one local. Um, most people I talked to, you know, I find, and we were joking earlier, I said, where are you from? And, or no, I said, how did you find, you know, how did you find Iredell County? How did you find this area?
From some friends that moved here. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And most of their answers is Google. And, you know, for a while I thought maybe Google had a operation here. And they said, no, we were Googling what we were looking for and that's how we found here.
Dang, the Googles found us.
The Google found us.
Google found us. So now there's no stopping. Yeah. This is Google's fault.
That's right.
You know, I blame Krispy Kreme for a lot of things. Have I ever told you this story?
No, you have not.
Me and Krispy Kreme do not get along. Can I tell you briefly and then we'll get back to you?
Absolutely.
So my, uh, dad's grandma, so that's my great grandma?
Yeah.
I think. She, I went to a public school. I went to a very nice public school in Mecklenburg County, forgive me. Had an opportunity to go on a date with the, uh, founder of Krispy Kreme in high school before he got famous. And she said no. And so I, but I'm just saying, I think that I am owed the airship to, to Krispy Kreme. I'm just throwing that out there as things evolve. Do you think people that move here versus people that are from here? I don't want to say do you think. I want us to know, how do you make that mix go? Because we're at a pivotal point right now, right? Like of, of, of what was and what is to come, if, if I can visually describe that in any way, shape, or form. How do you see your role as county commissioner being relevant to that?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm understanding the question you're saying is I've lived that, right? So like I said, when I grew up, I mean, you go back when my parents grew up, there was no Lake Norman, there was no I-77. So you're talking about the relevance of change and growth. And being from the south and being in the south of Iredell, I've seen it, right? So.
It's okay. You're good. Keep going.
Oh, sorry.
It's Joe Vagnone talking outside of the studio. His show's up next. He's talking out here. It's okay. It's okay. I like Joe, though. I like Joe.
So no, um, where were, I'm sorry, where were we?
We were talking, we're just sitting around talking around the table about the future of Iredell County and how the role of, of the commissioner is relevant, right? So why should people vote for you? Why, why, why do you think you got what it takes?
I mean, I believe that, I believe, I bring a solutions-based, um, style to, to management. So I bring a business, a large, a business background of, uh, very diverse, uh, business offerings. Like I said, manufacturing, uh, food, beverage, hospitality, health and wellness, you know, we've, we've started and, you know, we've created hundreds, you know, if not thousands of jobs over the years. So, so we know how to run a business and, um, I understand what people are going through with the, the growth because, you know, when we grew up here, I grew up on a dirt road and we didn't have an interchange. There was no Langtree Road. There was no Raleigh School Road. It was a different place.
What about people that would say like, oh, you're just wanting to put, uh, billion apartment complexes around the community and that's all you want? You don't care about diversity of the community. You only want a bunch of apartments. What do you think about that?
I don't think anybody wants more and more apartments right now. Um, but no, that's, that's, and that's not even at the county level. That's at the municipal level.